Whenever you're ready.
For me?
For me, it's for sure.
Right? Okay.
True, no, and yeah, I mean, as I keep thinking something like that, it's like ninety days to trust.
Okay, let's uh let's get started. Um, Envy, how are you? Okay, uh let's call this September twenty eighth, twenty twenty three school board meeting to order at five P M. Uh could I have a motion to establish the agenda as published?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, students?
Aye.
Uh directors?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Two zero four zero. Um with that, move to the superintendent report.
Great, thank you. Um a few things tonight, uh on a quick update. Um the first one is uh Principal Wold and myself have been talking and Principal Wold's been working with uh some team members over at the high school, um but it looks like we will um that we've been accepted and that we will start for the first time participating in the Washington Guaranteed Admissions Program. Um this is a state program uh that's uh sponsored by Central Washington, Eastern Washington, Evergreen State College, University of Washington Tacoma, Washington State University, and Western Washington. And um what it does is it puts the narrative on uh admissions into those colleges. So instead of students applying and then being admitted, they are automatically admitted if they serve um have a certain uh criteria, if they meet a certain criteria, and then they apply after that to get all of the rest of the things. And so um the two um benchmarks is the student needs to have a three point O or higher, and they have to be on track to complete all of the major requirements that would be for universities. But um it will take out a lot of that admissions process for our students. Um and those who are wanting to go to those schools can get direct admission basically. So we'll start participating in that. Um coming up, I think probably even this school year, we'll have some students who can benefit from this um with that. So that is um that update. Um wanted to just put it, toss it over to uh Director Sullivan to just kind of give a quick update. We heard from King County about what implications might or might not happen if there's a government shutdown. So update on that.
Right. So similar, we asked the question back when there was the debt ceiling limit. We want to know how a potential federal government shutdown would affect our district and or obviously banking. King County, he served as our ex officio banker. Um and so I spoke with uh Mike Smith, he's the chief investment officer for the county. And the impact to us, to King County, minimal and very manageable was his quote. Uh specifically, um unlike the debt ceiling impasse, principal and interest payments made by the federal government, like treasury notes, bills, wouldn't be impacted by a shutdown. Uh also, King County, the cash flow would not be impacted, though there is a possibility of a Moody's downgrade regarding the federal government. But it uh wouldn't affect us in any significant way. Uh and then King County could easily meet all cash outflows during any shutdown for a length of time. Mainly because, as you all know, most of our revenue, King County's revenue, comes from state and local taxes. So we're in good shape. If there's any changes as if and when a federal government shutdown takes place, we'll keep you updated, but we're asking the questions.
Thank you. Yeah. Um uh we had, uh we being Director Sullivan, uh Brandy Fox, Director Kuhn, myself, um had a very productive meeting with Councilmember Val Ducci today regarding the um grants. You might have read in the newspaper, I think it was last week's paper, um or maybe it was two weeks ago, about the grant that we've been um uh temporarily awarded. Um that's a ma- a matching grant where the county um would um uh give us two million dollars in exchange. We would invest two million dollars into the pool. We're asking for Councilmember Val Ducci's support in helping us with that grant process from the standpoint of some of the um rules and regulations and expectations from the county with respect to that property given its age. So we had a great meeting with her today, very preliminary, um but trying to make sure that um if we do accept that grant, that we're gonna be using it or that it can be used in a way that doesn't lock us into something that we really can't commit to. Um and so the terms of that grant is really what we're working on. Really appreciate her time today. From that, anything to add to that?
No.
Um the um next thing I'd like to do is just um present to you just some general kind of almost like reflections, but a little update on um what we've been up to and working on since we've last been meeting, um especially with respect to um the long range facility plan. So if I can move some things around on my screen. Since we last met last Thursday, uh you received, uh well, two Thursdays ago, um we had a discussion. But last Thursday, we brought forward the latest iteration of the Long Range Facility Planning Committee um presentation that we'll be taking out to the community. So I just wanted to remind everyone that next week, we'll have our first uh two presentations to staff only. Those will be on Wednesday before school and after school to give staff a chance to see our um our updates. And then we'll go to the community the following week with our three presentations. And just an update there, um really appreciated the feedback from you as a school board. We've been receiving other feedback about ways that we can make it better. Um we've met several times formally, twice this week, one happening this morning uh with Malum and Brandy and us, and they keep their meeting as well in between, but making some, I think, inroads. And I'm gonna show you a couple things. Uh one of the tensions we've run into, a conversation that you had last Thursday, is, you know, we want to show a timeline to show why we're so early in the process. But the tension is, as soon as you start putting dates on there, then people feel like, well, wait a second, you did make up your mind and you're not really waiting. So uh we think we have a solution that I'd like to run by you tonight. And then um making sure, um that we're just reiterating that that committee, um I know there's been questions you've received as a board and whatnot about what's the makeup of the committee? Um you know, was it handpicked uh and whatnot? And just a reminder that I believe we've received over eighty applicants that we went through and and uh we did have to make the selections, but it was a wide range of people who were participating with lots of different expertise um and uh from around the island. And the whole point is to get perspective um as we're going forward. Um so just wanted to reiterate that. And then some people have asked, you know, why are we even doing this? And so I think it's always important to to remind the community that certainly asset protection, and these are huge community investments, um you know, is there a state regulation that we have to do this? Yes and no. I mean, obviously, once the um Clean Schools Act goes into effect, they're gonna wanna see that we've actually done some planning and we've done some things. Um but you know, remembering that it's a whole conglomerate of reasons why we want to do this. And certainly, uh we want to make sure that our facilities are the very best for our students and staff. Here's kind of a concept that we've come up with without putting dates to it. Um this was just uh worked on this morning, and so we're gonna tweak some things going forward. But um this was a way that we thought we could kind of show how long this process really is and why we view ourselves more at the beginning. What's not on here are the questions that have come up around consolidation, because um you know consolidation could have happened last year, consolidation could happen uh next year, consolidation could happen in twenty years or might not happen at all. And that's because those are all choices that aren't about bonds and and the building. And so that is something that, you know, I I think we can set aside to really look at, though, that this is a really long process um that we would be on in terms of that trajectory. And as you've talked about around this board table, especially around the bonds and when do our bonds expire? And do we overlap? Do we not? Those are all things that we have to consider and to talk about. But um how does this resonate? Does this start to get at that visual of the timeline? Do you, would love some feedback for you all. Any feedback?
I think it's good. I would go back farther with with the dates, the things that have actually happened. Um that the Long Range Facilities Committee started meeting in March, like when it was formed.
Yep.
Uh basically, twenty nine, twenty nineteen. I mean, and then the, for the priorities list, and then twenty twenty three, early spring, when the committee started meeting, uh the recommend, committee recommendation was made. And then, you know, like what's to come in terms of community input. Uh like I would, I would spread that out um farther. Maggie Tysean was up too. Um I would, I would go back and kind of show where we were. And those can have specific dates because they occurred.
Correct, yep.
And then this is actually exactly what I was thinking. I'm like, put in the next steps without putting in any timeline or dates. But but here's where we were, and here's where we're going.
Excellent.
Uh and including, sorry, the demographer, the um the building condition. Like I would put those studies in too, like, and the fact that we had them in twenty nineteen and then updated in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. Like I would put all that information. This has been an ongoing process with lots of steps.
Great.
And selection of our consultants.
Maggie Tysean?
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thanks. Yeah, I like the idea of having just one more block to the left with the original Long Range Facilities Planning Committee, you know, um. And then I thi- I think that that kind of, that kind of gives the bigger picture accurately. But I do have a question, which is, when it says potential board decision and then following that is concept design and estimating, does that mean potential board decision, like decision on one, like the board choosing one plan? Or could it be board decision and then concept designs, you know, in parentheses, best in parentheses? Like could the board decide we want to look at like Plan A or Plan B? And I'm not saying necessarily of the plans that the committee presented to us. Or is this? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, uh if I understand the question correctly, it would be based on the direction that you would be giving um uh uh you know, me as a superintendent and a staff of what you would want us to go out and really hone in on and then bring back that information. So um that would definitely be a a shared decision, but it could be multiple things. It doesn't have to be, this is the one plan that would happen and therefore we we can explore. We can still be in the exploring mood mo- uh mode.
Um so I guess it, I would be more comfortable if it said concept design and then in parentheses S, just keeping that option open, um because I think it's possible the board might say, you know, we want to do A, but maybe with an element of B, something like that. Can we get those two prices to see what the difference could be or timelines or whatever? And then the other thing is, this seems like it's missing that community feedback piece. And so maybe just a little, uh like a little vertical rectangle there in between the second, you know, the LRFP update and then concept design and estimating, like since since it's really kind of like a whole additional process that we're about to go through.
Great.
Thanks.
Uh first of all, Fred, I want to say a thank you for listening to the concerns of, you know, uh the board and the community and always find ways to how to do better communicates, right? I really think that's ultimately the job of the institution, is how do we uh clearly communicate to our community members? And some community members are coming at different stages. And so I really love the idea of putting where we have been. And actually, you know, I know it's gonna create more work, but I actually wanted a little bit more where we've been in recognizing that this is kind of a civil thing that board do, right? So this is this long term facility plan now, but years ago, we also have these processes. So I think it's helpful for someone who's just coming straight in, not thinking that this is the first time we're doing this and that this is part of our board's work to really think about how do we maintain our facilities and and we take all these things into consideration. And so, you know, like factors in consideration as we're making this decision. And then, so in time, what Maggie Tysean said, you know, this would be really um powerful if we see that the community input is woven throughout this process and it's not just this uh where we're here now, but like, you know, um so if we see community, I see it, you know, at every stage, right? There is a community feedback.
Yep.
Right? And so I think I would kind of visually uh show that. That would be uh really helpful.
Great.
I think for me, if there's a way to do it, to sort of um be a little bit more um particular about potential bond decision, because I think the range there is significant. We're talking at probably the latest, when the bonds expire in twenty eight, twenty nine, so basically five years, and based on some comments in the room, tomorrow, right? So uh so I think, you know, that that is significant, right? And then everything sort of backs up from there, you know, particularly on the go forward once that decision has been reached. But I think we can comfortably say that it will be something when the bonds expire. Um and that, you know, the far outside date and everything else is, you know, influx.
So twenty twenty five to twenty thirty, is that what you're saying, that kind of thing or not?
Bond just in a line, it says twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine, bonds expire.
Exactly, yeah.
And that would be fine.
Yeah.
I think uh an educated reader could say it would be nice to have a bond before those expire.
Great.
Great. I go with that. Um when you're saying an educated uh reader, I don't think if I was to jump into this, I would be an educated reader. I don't know what really, if we don't pass a bond, if we don't have a bond, what is, what are the implications?
Maybe we could do a link to, like, if there's some short explanation of why um districts choose to go out with, you know, with the, try to keep the tax base or rate consistent. Maybe we can link to some explanation of why that's a significant date. Doesn't mean that we're choosing it, but but it's a significant date.
But I also like the transportation levy. We skipped our transportation levy and we delayed it, right? Pending outcome of our buses. Uh Maggie Tysean?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to junk this lovely timeline up, though. Like, I think maybe you could do an F A Q after this. And depending how you're planning on presenting this, sort of F A Q about different portions of this. It would be great to have, you know, the links that we already have on the website about the LRFP. Um, you know, questions about, you know, timing of a bond, for example. Like, I don't think you want to start adding a whole bunch of text on here, unless it's just the dates, like like the date of the current bond expiry, like Dan was suggesting.
Yeah, I mean, oh, sorry.
I just, I just don't think you want to add like a ton of stuff because this helps because it's pretty simple, you know?
Yes.
It's just when I look at it, I see potential bond which has significant implications and I I'm not sure what to take from that, right? Like if I should be concerned because like it's a big decision, I'm a couple months away, which, you know, if the board decided to act, could be the case. Or if it's five years down the line, so really there's nothing to get, you know, up in arms about now. And and that hasn't been decided, right? Like I, like I mean, there could be significant uh sort of action taken by the board in the very near future. There could not. And I think that's important for people following along, like to understand.
And I mean, I think the range that you said, to do like twenty 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 four, twenty twenty five, whatever, to twenty twenty nine, and then, you know, with the F A Q, I think that's great to do links to all the different materials. And then um and then that kind of explains, like, here's what the board is thinking right now and here's why, you know, by this date is a great time to do something, but it could, it's a, it's a.
Yeah, and there is that one slide that shows the bond step downs. And so we can maybe emphasize, you know, C slide, whatever, because that really shows that visually um to the reader as well. Great.
I do like the idea, as uh Jennifer said as well, about talking about what happened previously. The twenty nineteen committee, it's interesting, uh that committee made a decision which was to rebuild all the schools. And then many of those people have come back and revisited it in this twenty twenty three decision and based on the enrollment, have made a different decision. So to think this was somehow uh cherry picked or or rigged for an outcome. They were the same people in both sides of this, coming to two different decisions based on data that they're seeing. So I think that history is is at least helpful.
I mean, is it, I, not that I want to, not thinking of like advertising the um grand jury members. Um but, you know, I mean, it is public. And and I think that it's, I think, I'm thinking of it in a really good way of advertising. I mean, it's public who was on the committee because everything's posted. But if we even do, I mean, not that, I don't know. I mean, I just think publishing those names and people can find people who they might know or want to ask more questions of. Um I think the committee members, I mean, at least of what I've talked to, was happy to chat with their people and really saw that as a benefit for the community and that way people can know, oh, hey, I've got this question. And, you know, my child's classmate's parent was on it, so I can go ask them.
And and I will spend time at the beginning really revisiting that. You know, this isn't a committee decision, this isn't a Fred decision, this isn't just a board decision. This is a we decision, you know? These are our schools, they don't belong to any one person and and um and I'll try to add that. But point taken in terms of making sure people know that, you know, these are really thoughtful people who spent a lot of time, two of you are here who are on that, and then one of you in twenty nineteen as well. Um just revisiting a couple of enrollment clarifications, some great questions coming in um or that I've seen um uh through various venues. So thinking about the twenty, you know, my presentation two weeks ago and to here, just some emerging questions. Is the school district and school board hiding or misrepresenting enrollment um data? And some of that was the number of students leaving the district is more than what is being reported or the decline in the enrollment means the total student population is decreasing at a faster rate. So I want to talk about that just for a second. What is the superintendent hiding? Uh the superintendent only showed uh data from February to September. Just want to revisit that one one more time, just as you're talking to community members. And then the value of an outside consultant. So we talked about this slide uh here two weeks ago. I think the value of this slide and why I chose to only take February to September is that's a period of time that's consistent with the biggest impacts from COVID in terms of enrollment. And when we wanted to, if we want to compare that over time, being able to compare the exact same um time period is why I chose that. Plus, that's when we see the most transition. We don't see the large numbers swinging from September first to um January thirty first. Those aren't when people are moving in in large numbers. Um and so the reason why I did that was not to say that we don't have enrollment loss at other times. Sure, we also get enrollment gain at those times. And then that that bottom um note that I made there is just remembering that this, these withdrawal numbers are are just who's going out. It does not take into account all the students who enroll. And so, yes, we've turned over over a thousand students since, um you know, in the last six or seven years, but we've enrolled many, many um as well to offset that. So that's one point I just wanted to remind us on. Um and then just, this is a little bit, um this is fresh off the presses. I was thinking about this today and Giovanna, um I know she's not listening right now, but um do want to thank her. She's got me some great information here. Um some gr- this is a conversation, I think, Director Chloe, you had brought up. And then we had a member of the public who spoke um last time and then followed up and had the graphs. Really helpful information. So I wanted to kind of have the same conversation in a different way. Um I think it's been posited that, you know, when we compare our outgoing seniors to our kindergarteners, there's always been a delta there. What I, and I don't disagree, what I'm trying to remind us is that that delta has gotten bigger um in the last few years. And so it's harder to make up that number of students versus in the past. So in twenty twelve, and this is by headcount, the seniors who graduated outpaced the kindergarteners by seventy seven students. We're gaining, you know, we do gain sixty, seventy kids by the time those kids graduate. The problem is, now that we're getting in those outward years of that twenty twenty, the COVID, and then this year, closing that gap is what's gonna be harder, which is what's gonna contribute to that decrease in enrollment and why it's not a massive, but it is a slight decline and that's, that's what we've been projecting. So um just wanted to kind of um show this because I think we're saying the same things, um but maybe this sews that together a little bit better. Um and then just a reminder, and I think this goes into the conversation that you were just having too about, you know, the the previous long range facility plans and why we use an outside consultant on this. Um you know, first and foremost, I think if we do all the work in-house, we're subject to plenty of criticism that we're, we're the ones controlling the whole thing. And so um is it really representative of the community? And, you know, as those of you who have sat on them before, you know, we sit on the outside as staff. The community sits on the inside and we're just providing information. Um we really only talk when we're asked questions because that, it's a community uh conversation. They also have large perspective um on what's going on, not just in in our district, but in many other districts. And the amount of work that goes into this, we, I mean, we really don't have the staff to um pull that off. And so other examples, um you know, we have Chartwell's who um is a, is a, is a partner. We hire demographers, um we have someone who helps run the pool. So we have lots of other partnerships um that come in.
Question, I, I mean, I understand that Malum provides similar services to other districts as well as architectural services. I guess, so I understand the backdrop is that like this sort of relationship is relatively common or at least it seems prevalent to some degree in this area. It strikes me that there is a little bit of a conflict of interest, though, in terms of advising on a long range facilities plan and then being a potential provider of services under that plan. It like, I mean, that that that, that's just how it strikes me. I mean, like my like conflict of interest is like goes, goes up. And I mean, so I guess to that question, even if it's, and it may be like the answer is just, hey, like that's the way it works and sometimes there's close relationships, but it does strike me as a little bit of a conflict of interest.
We, we did go through that in twenty nineteen.
I was gonna say, I, I don't think it was the last board, I think it was two boards ago.
Yeah, two boards ago. And when we did uh, when we hired Malum, um we reviewed, we did an R F P and we had three or four uh providers come in. And uh there were two top ones, of which Malum was just head and shoulders above. Uh it also helped that they had gotten done building the schools and they knew a lot about our district and our community. They had gone out to our community in a bunch of other ways as well, showing the new schools that we were building and helping, helping pass the bond as well. So I think there was a level of expertise there uh that really resonated with that board at the time.
And it was, I remember it being, we, we had a variety of different opinions on the board and we had great discussions about the pros and cons. And um, you know, some of the board directors at that time had worked with Malum on the previous project. Um and I, I, I am sure if and when we do something, that we would have the same conversations in terms of who to hire and that Malum is absolutely not a, not a shoo-in, that that we would send out um R F Ps and um and then, you know, look at those and then interview several candidates and and make a decision. But, you know, I, I, I just wanted to add what Fred's, to what Fred said in terms of, you know, we, we, it, it's too much for us to do in-house. We're, we educate kids, we don't build buildings. And um, you know, we have people who know things about that with, that work within the district, but but this is what architect, school architecture firms do. And, you know, why wouldn't we go to the experts in the field? I mean, we wouldn't go to, we wouldn't go to them to to um determine our curriculum, but but of course we would go to an architecture firm um to lead us in this project. And um and they're very much the leading, they're the consultants. They're, they're putting it all together, they do tremendous amount of work behind the scenes. Um I mean, whoever we chose. And and the ones that we interviewed all have different processes and um and in terms of community engagement. And I think that we all can agree that that Mercer Island is a very unique community with a lot of really positive traits. And because Malum, one of the selling points, because I actually don't think I was, I think I had to be convinced. I don't think I would, because I didn't have the relationship with them prior. Um I can't remember for sure, but I know that it wasn't an easy decision. Um that they had the experience of having the community meetings and understanding the needs and wants of the community that, you know, truly have not changed. I mean, maybe specific things have changed, but in terms of the makeup of the community, the very involved parent community, the tax issues with our fixed income seniors. Um, you know, the fact that we have many non-school aged parent uh residents who are paying taxes. I mean, they got all of it. So, you know, in that, they had a lot going for them that that kind of led that on. But but for me, I was very much looking at the process and and how they take people through. Just like when we hired um someone to help the board, it Just like when we hired someone to help the board, it was a superintendent search. It was exactly the same way that in terms of sending out RFPs and interviewing different. And they all had little bit, little bit different, maybe not even little, some had really big different strategies and, and criteria.
Also what, we had a different firm help with the middle school than the Northwood. So we did have two separate architecture firms.
That I can remember.
We had different architects and a different general contractor on, on the two different projects.
So Mailum wasn't a shoo-in for the whole project previously either.
Well, I, and that's in terms of a shoo-in, I think the concern is, I mean, like you go to an investment bank and say like, you know, what should I do? Maybe they have a bias towards an M and A transaction because it results in big fees if they were to get it. Similarly, I think the concern would be, yes, they might be like, you know, the best in their field, but maybe there's a bias for new buildings versus renovations because, you know, that, you know, if one were to bid on a potential project, those are bigger projects, right? You know, same thing with the type of doctor you go to and what sort of surgery, like they might have a vested interest to some extent in terms of what they recommend.
And I think.
And I understand that like, you know, they may have been, and it sounds like they were, the most professional sort of, you know, for everything considered, seemed like the top pick, you know, despite some of those, you know, con, like tensions.
Yeah, bias was a big concern.
Yep. And that's our.
Well, I appreciate you bringing up all that, Dan. And it's true because if we just kind of go through the process, we are not thinking about how we might just kind of fall into the status quo, right? But also a wonderful thing about the board and having community feedback is that through these conversations, through the five board members, that we are kind of processing through this, right? And so even if two of us have biases that we aren't aware of, that the other three are discerning other information. And so collectively, through the process, so we trust the process. Like we trust the process of our community being really providing us critical feedback. We trust the process of hopefully we're five intelligent folks who can discern information, you know, and, and then making a decision that address, I think, a lot of your concern. But I think it is good to keep that in our forefront when we're making this decision. But I think the process so far, that if we have a really strong community engagement, it will address a lot of the implicit bias that we might have.
And then, you know, there are definite costs and you went through the LR, you know, with the, the RFP process with the costs. We certainly could have considered going in a different direction for this second time around, but the cost would have escalated. You know, we had a, you know, it was much cheaper to stay with Mailum the second time around. And, you know, we wouldn't be in this position doing a whole nother LRFP had it not been for significant demographic changes, but you know, that's where we are on that.
And also in terms of cost, I mean, we're looking at, you know, 300 to 700 million dollars with potential facilities build. This is a fraction of a percent, I mean, it's like 0.1% of what it is. So would you pay 0.1% fee to have experts help you and guide you through this? Or do you want to wing this something like this? The fee seemed very reasonable in that light.
And I think it's also important to note that with the 2019, 2020, you know, we finished it as COVID was hitting. And so we, the, the plan had been for community engagement as the next step and that didn't happen. So, you know, that was part of the process, it wasn't anything that was being hidden. It just unfortunately didn't happen because we couldn't do it. But that was very much a, you know, priority list. It was, there wasn't a decision for the board to make on that one. We knew that it wasn't being made then, we knew that it would be coming up later and, you know, in the next 10 years at that point. But, but that was intended, I mean, it was part of the plan to do that.
So, and then lastly, just, you know, what will it look like at those three different community engagements? So just wanted to remind you all as a board, we're planning on a 50 to 60 minute presentation. That's where Leroy from Mailum and myself will lead that. We'll have numbered slides with the questions so that people can follow along. They can write down questions related to slides and be, and not, and feel like they're participating throughout or to attend. Then we'll do 30 minutes of Q and A, that could go longer or shorter. And then there'll be 30 minutes for a survey, longer or shorter there, so that people can complete that at the meeting. We're going to be working with Qualtrics on this project. Anne Reeves and I met, have been meeting with them to kind of put together the survey. And for those who want to stick around at that event, we'll even bring up what were, you know, what were the results of that survey at the event? So people can see right there and then, you know, what are people thinking? So, you know, that won't be mandatory, but that'll be an option. So just wanted to kind of use those just as an update a little bit there and Maggie Ty.
Thank you. Just to be clear for the viewing public, is each of those three meetings going to follow the same material and same procedure? This isn't like a part one, part two, part three where people need to try to attend all three meetings?
Great question, yes, it's not a serial meeting, one to the next, it is, each one will be exactly the same.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. And then we'll also record, we're going to record all of them, but we'll pick the one that has the best recording, the best sound. And we'll put that one online so people can watch who couldn't attend and they can also participate in the survey. So that's my update.
Okay, let's, thank you. Let me look at my notes here. Uh, let's move on to 2A, Board Policy 1809 District Improvement Plan.
Great, we're going to bring in Director Williams for this. She is lead on this particular project from Learning Services. And, you know, we're fresh off of your meeting a week ago, which again was really helpful and, and appreciate everyone's engagement. So that's going to be feathered in and probably with any good improvement plan, it's a bit more like a recipe card than anything else and always being improved. So Director Williams.
Sure, thank you. So a lot of this will feel pretty familiar, but we've added in some update slides just to give you some kind of updates about where we are. I think our conversation last week will sort of resonate in this as you see some of the updates populate through here. So just as a reminder, our purpose of this was really just to make sure that we had a plan that would perhaps help facilitate targeted growth and development as a district and making that progress and seeing our student achievement rise. So we've included our values, vision and mission, all of which were included in the previous iteration of this. So this is not a new slide. Within that, we have a reminder of just our fundamentals. Those are aligned with each of the district improvement categories or domains, as it were. So as we go through that, you'll see those show up based on that. Excuse me. So these are kind of those domains that we categorized everything in, in our last iteration of this. And as a reminder, our district improvement plan that we proposed last year was a two-year plan. This being the second year of that plan. So what we're reporting on this year is just an update of that content. So these were the four categories that we focused our energy toward, which was creating a deep sense of belonging, belief in the limitless potential of every student, removing barriers and broadcasting student void. So I'll move us into the instructional programming piece, which is really the learning services portion of this. So these were the elements of what we had focused on for creating a deep sense of belonging that would account for fundamental one, two and five. We outlined some systems actions that we would engage in and then some indicators that would identify whether or not we made marked progress. Part of the iteration of this district improvement plan or the intention of that was to try to be a little bit more targeted in our approach of things. And I think while this got a little bit further, our conversation even in just last week's time realized that perhaps maybe we need to get a little bit more discreet in our focus areas. So these were some of those items that we had listed and we listed out things that were more general and identifying that our students are our priority, develop awareness of our inclusive practices in UDL, which were a continuation of previous years, social emotional learning and then identify and support some unmet needs. We then identified some things that would be more specific based on the schools and what their progress was. So the elementary included things like mindfulness, class meetings, restorative problem solving. IMS had just extracurriculars, Gator Time and web. And then Mercer Island High School had No Place For Hate, Student Voices For Change, Link Crew and Maroon Wave. And then they partnered with Reese Hollins for part of their work as well. And our student indicators that we had anticipated using were our EES risk indicators, attendance data and discipline, as well as participation activities. So I pulled out some of the data that you'll see show.
Question, real quick, real quick, a quick question. For participation activities, I forget the monitoring data we've reviewed, but is this the percentage of middle school students that participate in any extracurricular activity? I mean, just to me, like when I think about belonging, that's like probably in my view, like the key metric that I would think of at, at the middle school level at least.
Yeah, it's, I think there's been a piece too of before or after school athletics or clubs and organizations.
Yeah. And do we know what percentage of students that don't participate in any organized activity?
I know that probably better for the high school than I do the middle school. I don't.
Okay, I'm ahead.
So the, a lot of this data shows back up in your fundamental reports as you go through the year, but pulling it out to kind of target the specific items or domains that we focused our energy on in our district level report for our EES data, that's categorized in some of these same ways. So there's a section around belonging and identity and this is the student component of that and looking at how students are perceiving that. So this top portion is just a series of questions that are connected to that content. And then below is just a longitudinal look at that. What they do is categorize kind of the amount of change based on whether or not that's positive or negative. So this gray band is a relatively neutral number. And then anything that is orange getting progressively darker is a negative number. And blue getting progressively darker is a positive number. So really our only significant change in this particular category was for the negative and it was that the school has effective equity practices for all, really looking across the district. So that was one area of target that we may need to improve upon going forward. Moving into our second domain, belief in the limitless potential of every student, again, connecting to fundamentals one, two and four. Lots of our system actions here were focused on the idea of grading and/or screening and/or assessment. So you'll see all of those things focused in there. So a lot of that is around the EES, but also the state testing, benchmark screening, our whole child assessments, which are kindergarten readiness. And then of course, the middle school has endeavored through that standards-based grade book as well as thinking about the elementary as well. So looking at that section, the best.
One question coming your way.
Have, um, have we reviewed sort of testing benchmarks for accelerated math? Is a potential obstacle for the limitless belief in each child's potential? I mean, barrier, I mean, that's like sort of a, a very concrete barrier in some ways. And I understand that like maybe, like there can be issues with students not being prepared for a class, but in terms of productive struggle, that's sort of a visible, when I think of removing barriers and I see a testing requirement for an accelerated math pathway, that seems like a barrier to me.
Yes, and we can even come back to that as we go forward. But that was one of the reasons to do that Director Prescott and the middle school, as they started looking at changing the, even the instruments that we were using and using some of the, the assessments so that they're coming more from the curriculum that the students already see, rather than something that is exterior to that. But we can certainly come back and revisit that, especially as part of fundamental two. Yeah.
So the, the item that, yeah. The item that connects back to this is the section of our EES that's called High Standards And Expectations. And we had fairly stagnant numbers in that category, so not much change there. But I also pulled some additional data that was of, I mean, it was novel to us in the sense that we started using our iReady diagnostic tool at the elementary levels. And so just looking at that and kind of seeing how some of that played out and those numbers showed up fairly accurately in terms of correlating to that end of year outcome data for smarter balanced. So the, the separations are a little different in these data points. Our iReady tool separates it into five categories versus obviously smarter balanced is four levels. But even if you just take a look at these bottom numbers of yellow down to the darker red here and pull those together and take a look at these two numbers, you'll see a relative similar numbers in terms of how students performed on those outcome assessments. So I think that that was one of our successes was seeing that that helped ensure that students are getting the instruction that they need, thereby removing barriers to help them find success on those outcome assessments. Connected to that in another way is the growth that we get out of iReady. So one of the things that, you know, as we think about removing barriers, barriers is thinking about different populations of students and their needs and whether or not those are being met. So a couple of areas that I pulled out just for us to look at based on the demographics that get filtered into that iReady diagnostic tool information. So students who have IEPs are those without IEPs and English learners are those who are not English learners. If you take a look at these numbers, these percentages that are listed here, these are the typical growth median percentages. So what that means is basically kind of taking the middle number there between how kids performed with IEPs and how they performed without IEPs. This was really kind of the first time I dug into that outside of the context of looking at it at individual schools. And I found it interesting to see that the numbers were actually not similar per se, but that I felt like we were doing pretty well in those categories, but certainly could do better, right? So looking at those students and how they performed for IEPs versus without IEPs, we can have some significant growth here, particularly in fourth grade and fifth grade as we go forward. And similarly with English learners, but in kind of a different way. We had actually pretty extensive growth here for third and fourth graders and less growth for those that were in fifth grade. So thinking about how can we navigate that and ensure that students are getting the access that they need so that they can grow based on whether or not they have any language barriers that might prohibit them from doing some of the math that's built into their day.
So I, real quick, I, I like this data, I mean, at least for me individually, I would like to see this just blown up a lot more in terms of like basically as I think of it as like the standard nine deviations in each subject and then what's the growth for each individual. But I think, to me, like, and I think in particular the unlimited belief in each student is really the core of what we do as a district. And the others, belonging, broadcasting, I think flow from that and from that self of empowerment. And to me, like, that, that's growth, like for each student year on year. And I think it's what parents ask, like, what did my student learn, my child today? And particularly for those in art districts, elementary schools, you know, when those go in reading at an early age or doing math, wanting to see like, okay, are they learning year to year? But then across the board, like those in the middle, you know, those that are later to develop. So I think that this is a very powerful sort of table and I think we should just put this on steroids in terms of tracking like what it means to really provide differentiation and to allow each student to achieve at their level to just see if they're growing each year. Because in this, it's hard to tap, like, I mean, when I see like just that broad cohort, I can tell, like, the broad cohort is going up one level. But looking for instance, I think our standard math textbook and for our fifth grade highly capable is one year above like national grade level. That strikes me, it seems year on year, assuming that those kids were advanced in kindergarten, is not particularly, not showing a lot of growth maybe, would be one way to look at it. So anyways, I, I like this, I would just like to see it sort of across the board.
And, yeah, we just, so we wrapped up and just as a reminder, and you'll see more of this, you know, we wrapped up iReady implementation for third, fourth and fifth grade only last year in math. We did then some piloting in other areas. But Nova, this year we have K8 in both, can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so yes, these numbers are great, we get them by individual student as well. So we can see their percentage of growth and the teachers can see that, that's part of what they look at at the end of the year. And in the winter, when they get a second diagnostic, they have to have two data points to see the growth, of course. Um, and in the winter, when they get a second diagnostic, they have to have two data points to see the growth, of course. Um, but yes, we are going to, we now have iReady tools for the diagnostic in both reading and math in K eight. Um, so we're in our kind of phase of assessing now. Um, what is exciting is that we were, we're getting kind of our first indicators back and, um, getting that information about where kids are. And then in the winter, what we'll see is once they've taken that diagnostic, we'll get to see their growth and how far along the trajectory they are for a typical growth, um, point based on where they started at the beginning of the year. So it's very individualized in terms of where they are and where they should be. And then we have a secondary data point to that, which is called stretch growth. So for a student who is below level, um, who needs to close gap, those students have to meet their stretch growth goal, uh, for two or more years in order to close that gap, which it would be, um, on par with what we would expect to see in terms of closing those gaps for kids and consolidating that. So, um, I'm excited to see that data in K eight. And then teachers will have historical data about how kids have done previously from year to year, so they can look back at their class that they have now and see what they did in the previous grade level.
And then Director Tucker, I think you have a question?
Yes, and you can answer this at a later point if this is not the right point to be talking about it. But I know that when we did some of our school visits last year, there were parents who were asking when they would have more insight into the iReady system in terms of like being able to see kind of like the workbooks their kids were using in school, that kind of thing. And it sounded like there were some things in the works to introduce like new aspects of iReady this year. Is that happening already or is that something that we can look forward to as the months go on?
Yes, so we have a couple of things planned. Uh, one of the things that we have planned is that we're going to do another family night, um, this fall. And they're actually bringing in some of their national directors to help lead that, uh, particular, um, session for families. So we'll have communication coming out, um, soon about that. And they'll send us an invite and it'll, they'll manage the webinar. Um, so they'll be kind of the primary leads of that to provide information to families. But then one of the things that I think families expressed they had a, a significant interest in was getting, um, the for families report. So there's a report that we can get to families that is, um, a for families report that basically tells them how they did on the diagnostic. So our intention is to make sure that that goes home if, um, by the end of October, so that all homeowners are able to see that information. We just want to make sure that we're able to communicate effectively around what you can expect to see in that report. So that's part of why we're, um, delaying that just a smidge. Um, aside from that, the other part of it is that we have to communicate alongside that around the dyslexia screening piece. So our timing will be a little later after they've finished their deadline, but, uh, early enough that parents will be able to see that in a reasonable amount of time to be able to have that information, um, and can ask those questions. Our teachers in elementary will probably talk about it at conferences as well, based on where the diagnostic was in the fall and then how they're doing along the personalized instruction or my path it's called. Um, and so we've done some updates as well. Uh, I just did some updates, um, to a webpage to get some parent information on there. And so we'll send out some information to families so they can access that and get more info.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, um, so another one around, uh, removing the barriers here. We've got, um, supportive learning environment is kind of our EES, uh, data point here. And so this one was really interesting in looking at, we, you know, the gray bar again is sort of this, uh, negligent change, it's sort of there, but when we look at that orange, it's negative and the blue is positive. Uh, neither are really extremely positive or negative, um, but this is where we found some change occur. Um, so one of those things was all students are held to the same behavior rules and expectation went down. Um, student's success is celebrated in the school went up. And then most students are respected of others, uh, respectful of others at this school, uh, went down. Broadcasting, student voice, um, this one, uh, you know, some of those same data points that we showed are connected to that in terms of how kids feel about being at school. And so some of that is connected and you'll see that show up in some of those fundamental reports. But you also see a lot of this content in terms of, uh, student successes, um, show up as celebrations for the board, uh, as a part of that. Some general celebrations and wonderings. Um, so I think our students continue to perform well. Uh, Fred and I were talking earlier this fall about some of our data and, um, of course, my passion, as you well know, is, uh, reading. And so that's been a success area where I think we've seen some significant growth in our kids at those foundational reading levels. Um, we have fewer students then thereby needing those additional supports, uh, beyond what happens in the K two classrooms. And then, um, our student data between the diagnostic and the smarter balanced, um, definitely showed that high correlation as predicted by the, um, same data correlations that they've done in the company. Um, our student growth markers using that diagnostic screening tool, I think by and large, as we looked at them in the spring and then looked at them again in the fall, uh, have demonstrated pretty significant growth for our kids. So, um, it'll be interesting to see year two because year two is always a little, or year one is always a little bit strange. Kids don't know what to expect in the test, they don't know how to do it. Um, so year two will feel a little more comfortable to them and it will be interesting to see those, uh, markers show up this year. And then of course, we have, um, some positive growth, I think, in celebrating student success through the EES. Some wonderings that I think emerged in our conversation and even in just reviewing the data is uh, really thinking about being more focused in our intentional growth areas so that we can prioritize what it is that we're working toward. I think right now, even in just trying to find data points to report on such a broad concept of this dip, doesn't really allow us to be quite as specific and mark the progress quite as clearly. Uh, so that's one of the things that I think has come out as a wondering, um, and just thinking about what are the most important things to us as a school district and community that we want to make sure that we're focused or focusing our energy on that. So one of the ways to consider that would be maybe an if this, then that. So if we do this action, then we expect to see this occur through an indicator. And so have, for example, targeted professional development toward differentiation in classrooms would be demonstrated through achievement in a variety of data points on assessment tools regardless of the demographic. Um, and then lastly, you know, I think it's both a celebration and a wondering. It's going to be really exciting for the first time since I've been in Mercer Island School District since two thousand eight to have the same assessment tool in K eight, um, to be able to see that data across that whole continuum of learners. We also have some students at the high school who will be engaging with that assessment tool as well. Um, and so we'll have K twelve data to a degree, but less so in nine twelve. Fred, would you like others to share some of their bits?
Sure, um, I know, oh, sorry, go ahead, Director.
Can we go over the academics before we go through?
Sure.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
So I mean, so I really liked the attempt to, you know, the beginning slide, you said that we were very vague before and how we're having more of an attack test, specific actions and indicators. So I see that I like that. And I was wondering if, uh, the next level of elevating this is we actually put like a percentage increase that we want, right, instead of just saying we increase this or we're doing that. But what, you know, um, if we're going to make this a plan, it'd be nice to know where we're at and what do we plan to increase in a year, in five years? And so it just gives us a better goal to measure ourselves by.
Yep. Just quickly on that one, you will see that level of specificity, especially in the school improvement plans. So at the end of October and the first of November, that's where you will see it all the way down to the school level, maybe even a, a grade level and whatnot. Um, and then what you don't see, but it's, you know, come up a little bit later on in Director Prescott's presentation is part of our evaluation process. There are principal student growth goals, there are staff student growth goals. And so it goes all the way down to the student or small group level as well. Um, and so then it all feeds up and the goal is to kind of have a continuum of growth that we're all working on instead of these separate categories.
And then as we're doing this, you know, I know it's really uncomfortable, but when we talk about, when we see the disparity and we see it's urgent, it's really only urgent as a system if it is really our problem. And so with all the different problems that we have, we tend to prioritize what matters to us, right? And so as we're doing this, how do we make sure, even if it's not our problem, how do we, uh, have accountability? And as you're saying, how do we have accountability on the classroom level and a school level and a district level if we're not meeting the benchmark? So it's one thing to have goals, but I just feel like, uh, in my system work, our systems really don't change because there's nothing that holds us accountable. It's just like, oh, too bad. You know, we didn't meet our goals and then we move on. And so it would obviously be very powerful if we think about what are our accountability measures, right? If we don't meet those goals. And then I really like the wondering, like if we become more focused on intentional growth through prioritization. So if we're making, uh, like if we're fine tuning the best of the best, right? And we, uh, so if people are already doing well and we're just going to really further increase their growth, that's wonderful. But then if, you know, as a system, would it be better for us to prioritize, you know, and close the disparity gap? And so having a better understanding of that student profile, what are their needs and who are they? And it would be a really powerful conversation amongst the board, like how do we prioritize our resources and our strategy to really, uh, address those students' needs? Because as a whole, I feel like, um, parents are really, you know, there's a lot of parents who are really happy with Mercer Island. And there's a small part who are really not happy, right? And we should never have, I mean, you know, people, of course, are not going to be all with the same love, but we shouldn't ever have a part that's really not happy and feel like we're not meeting, you know, uh, most of their needs. So I think, um, as the things that we're wondering, I don't know if that's a poor conversation of, uh, how do we help shape in what the school district prioritizes, right? Do we make our band program better, you know, and go to more global, right? Or, uh, because we do so many wonderful things, or do we really focus on students who are struggling? Um, and finally, I do have, um, so as I'm looking at, uh, all this data that shows, uh, like the belonging data and our supportive learning environment, there were a couple of, uh, questions that I feel like are kind of tied together that speaks to that maybe, uh, if you all kind of look at it further. Um, so one thing is like, um, the belonging, it says school has, um, the school has effective equity practices for all. And then we really had, and it shows a star that we've regressed by four, uh, four percent at home, right? And then the other points are all students are held to the same behavior, uh, rules and standards. So I also hear in the community that, uh, students and parents, they feel like the disciplinary actions maybe are, uh, the, uh, the same by gender, by race. And so I, I, you know, both of those, it's kind of interesting for me that they really show a negative like a regression, right? And I wonder if they are actually like, it'd be really interesting, and I'm not volunteering for this at all, but looking at some of the data analysis of this, like doing a regression analysis to see how, uh, how these questions are tied and when we address one, it will naturally also increase the other question, the, the other indicators that we're measuring, right? So they're not really isolative, uh, indicators, but they're really connected. Um, so those, and then, you know, and as a, a social worker, it makes me think about, you know, when people don't feel like they belong, you know, um, that's the act that, right? Um, and you know, that's a generalization, but that's just because of my, the world I, uh, work in, they tend to act out and how I feel like that also is like most students are, um, may not be as respectful to each other. And sometimes, you know, if we really think that our students have, uh, a limited potential and we have best, uh, they are whole awesome human beings, that a lot of these things is environmental that's truly shaping them, right? And if we increases that other one, then the, it, the respect will increase. Uh, so it's just really interesting, those three, uh, indicators that show the most like, uh, regressive, you know, uh, like it's, um, yeah, it's gotten worse, like I wonder if we focus on those, um, happen to be really targeted in addressing those disparities.
And this is all of this, you know, this is all of the, the data compressed together. Um, it's interesting what happens when you break it out by school and you start to see like different schools actually pops out in different areas. So sometimes it's not, the whole district needs to work on that, right? And so that's where you get the nuance, um, conversation that our principals are looking at, learning services, I'm looking at to kind of look, you know, where, where are the levers for each school, but absolutely. Um, my recommendation, just because of time, um, President D'Souza would be to do human resources and, um, and our business and operations maybe either at the next meeting or, uh, Director Battersby is also homesick today and so she's tuning in, but, um, uh, that could be tricky. So maybe we postpone that one a little bit. It's true. This was new last year, we added our other departments because we're all trying to improve. And what are we trying to improve is student learning. So, um, that might be a way you want to think about just because of timing.
Yeah, I think that sounds reasonable. We've got people waiting for recognition as well, so let's, let's move there. Is that okay with the rest of the board?
No.
Okay?
All right, Director Williams, thank you. Have a great one.
Okay, let's move on to recognition and public input. We'll first do recognition, then we'll be public input.
Great, um. Yes, uh, do we have Lindsay here? I'm probably outside with someone to screen. Yes, everyone's here. Ian, you want to bring in Lindsay first? Come on, Ian.
At the podium.
Oh, gosh.
So this has been, um, a bit of a, a winding road, um, but I think a long time coming for our school district and that is, um, bringing forward, uh, official athletic director. We've had athletic coordinators, we've had, um, assistant principals who have been the athletic director. Director Prescott served in that role when she was, uh, at Mercer Island High School. Um, but when you look at our school district, and I think we've shared a couple of times around here that, um, we have more teams than many, many of even the four A schools in Kinko. Um, of all the three A schools, I believe we still have the most number of teams. Um, and I think that's, uh, reflective of our community, it's reflective of our students. Um, but it takes a tremendous amount of coordination. So, um, though, though on the job, uh, uh, for longer, uh, than just today, uh, started much, uh, before this, was our athletic coordinator. And this is Lindsay Blaine. Some of you know her, um, through coaching, um, or have seen her at the district. But, um, just some highlights from Lindsay before I turn it over to her. Um, obviously she was our coordinator and is now our athletic director. That gives us a different voice when she sits at the table with the other athletic directors in Kinko. Um, just being a coordinator versus a, a director matters in the making those decisions. But she, uh, was our Islander Girls Basketball Coach, uh, for four seasons from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. A graduate of Purdue University with a BA in Movement and Sports Science. Um, and at Purdue, uh, we have an NCAA champion in the javelin. Um, and Lindsay, uh, received her masters from Gonzaga University, uh, in sports and athletic administration. Um, and then under her, um, time as our coordinator, countless, uh, Kinko championships, state championships, um, and some tremendous accolades. So I know her, her presence is already being felt, it has been, but even to a, a greater degree. So, um, welcome to your new position and turn the floor over to you, Lindsay.
Thank you very much, uh, very excited to be here today. Uh, I, you know, I, I don't usually struggle for words, but when I sat down to like write out what I was going to say, I, I really couldn't find the words to express just how happy I am to be in this position in the community. Uh, one thing I really have enjoyed about being at Mercer Island is, um, it is a small town feel and I'm kind of from a smaller area, you know, growing up, I'm from the Columbia River Gorge, Hidden River, Oregon. And I really kind of gravitated towards that family dynamic, the feeling of belonging, the feeling of like being on the same team. And I've really enjoyed that while I'm here. So I'm looking forward to expanding on that and bringing that to the athletic program even more so. Um, as Fred said, you know, we offer a lot of sports at Mercer Island and we have even more sub varsity teams than anyone in our area. Uh, and that's because I think the level of care and, um, commitment to growth that we have for our student athletes and providing opportunities for everyone to feel like they belong somewhere. So I'm excited to keep that going and keep serving in that way. And, um, you know, bringing a, a feeling of love and compassion and leadership and then also competition, right? We want to win, we want to be successful and, you know, whatever that is for whoever is participating. And greatly looking, looking forward to continuing that tradition. Um, so far I've just been really impressed, um, also with the leadership on the island. It, it feels like from the leadership group in the, the district, you're really supported by strong people that want to, want to learn, want to get better, want to continually focus on our students and empowering everyone to reach greater levels, which is so motivating for me. Wake up every day and know that, you know, you're not stagnant, you're always pushing to, to kind of be better at what you do. And, um, yeah, I just, you know, very much enjoyed it. And, um, just want to thank, you know, Fred and Nick for, you know, being there. And Nick especially being just such a fantastic mentor and support and sounding board and, um, you know, and, and accountability buddy, right? You know, it's gonna keep me accountable for everything and I think that's, that's really great. Um, I would thank my wife, Chrissy, um, over there, she came with me today. She kind of has, um, you know, she is, we've been together for six years. We were recently married last year, so while I, I have this position. Um, but Fred, you don't know this, you are actually a part, and Nick were a part of my, uh, engagement, my proposal to Chrissy. Um, when I got the job as an athletic coordinator, right when I got it, I told her, "Hey, we have this giant, um, giant, like, admin dinner that we have to go to in October. And you have to dress really nice, you have to show up, like, it's a annual tradition, just be ready." Uh, and she shows up and there's no one there and she was instantly, like, furious, like, "We're, we're the first ones here, this is embarrassing." Uh, waiter proposed and, um, she's very happy. And then before she started crying, said, "Are your coworkers coming?" So instantly, she's also been a part of the community without everyone knowing. Um, and just to thank her for always supporting me and being there. Um, especially as a, a partner of a coach. If you've ever been a partner or you've been a coach, you understand it's a very, very hard position to be in. Crazy hours, long days, um, you get to sit in the stands and listen to people tear apart your significant other most of the time. Um, she's been nothing but gracious and, and wonderful.
And I would just add some words from Nick, uh, reminding us, um, that it is about the whole child. And, and Nick, I appreciate your words that, you know, Lindsay's helped to build one of the most successful athletic programs. Um, but it goes beyond that. Mercer Island High School's athletic leadership team is the largest chapter in Kinko and it primarily focuses on growing student leaders on campus to help our school community build success. So when we think about the fundamentals of leadership, um, that we have in there, um, it is about not just what happens on the field, but also in the classroom and in our community. So, uh, congratulations and onward hope.
Hey, thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, I think we have Owen. Owen, now, you can be right there. You're great. Um, we have some continued catching up to do as we had some very successful, uh, athletes last, uh, fall, or last spring, rather. Uh, this is, uh, Owen Powell. Owen won the, uh, three A sixteen hundred meter state championship back at the end of May. Um, his time was four minutes, seven seconds, um, and seventy-five hundredths of a second.
You gotta show that picture because it is just perfect.
Look at that.
It's a great picture.
Let me go back to my screen, Owen. I gotta get it right. Um, uh, during the race, uh, Owen, it, it, the, the story goes that, uh, he kind of settled in, uh, with the pack and, and, uh, kept up with the top couple runners. Um, and then it was really in that fourth lap where he really turned things, uh, and, and took over the race. Um, you know, uh, picking up the pace and it sounds like with about two hundred feet, fifty meters to go is where you made your move. And so, uh, you set a new school record earlier on in the year, uh, a four-minute, uh, six-second or six-and-a-half second, uh, sixteen hundred meter, which is pretty impressive. Um, and you were knocking on the door there for the state championship. And I know your coach, um, has a longtime supporter of Mercer Island, Ms. Empy. It's good to see you here tonight. But Owen, uh, we're gonna give you the floor in a second, but we'll let your coach talk about you a little bit too. So Susan.
Oh, yay. Um, well, I will say that race was, there's so many events in track and field, but the sixteen hundred is kind of the iconic race. And I'm very biased many times, but objectively speaking, I will say that that race at state was the premier race amongst all the classifications. I overheard coaches say, they'd be sitting, watching the rest of the meet, and then they kind of pop up and they're like, "This is the race we gotta watch." Because Vince, who was third, um, he had gone head-to-head with Vince. I mean, he's a Blanchett runner and the two of them have this great rivalry. But there were so many people that were so anxious to see kind of how it turned out. And, um, Owen is both physically and mentally so strong. And in an event like that, you need both things. And he just had the race of his life and that previous picture, I think, captured the surprise. But like, in a way, it shouldn't be a surprise because he was so well-prepared. It was just, it was, I will never get sick of looking at that picture. I mean, that's just the thing of beauty right there. So, and the thing, and I, I, I will say, the thing I like about coaching Owen is that he's a very coachable young human. Um, but what he does is he races the floor for our whole program. So he works so hard physically, but he gets everybody else on board too. He wants everybody to succeed. And so he is a great role model for doing all of the little things and really dialing into the details and encouraging everyone to do the same. And I think it's so great for, track has, you know, a hundred kids on it, cross-country has eighty kids. And when they watch him do what he's doing, it's making both programs that much better. So, um, he's just wonderful, the coach, love it. And obviously, coming away with a state championship. And it was the fastest time of all the classifications. So not only did he win, you know, three A, but he beat all the four A kids, two A kids, one A kids. It was, it was just an amazing day. So, anyway, go ahead and say something, but I, that was just, it's super awesome.
I don't really know what else to say. Had a really good day that day. Ended up, yeah, being a good race.
Who'd you bring here tonight? You have other, you have fans in the audience tonight?
He didn't even tell his family.
Well, we recorded it, so they'll get to go back and watch and, uh, congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, we're gonna have you hang on, um, because we're gonna bring in the lacrosse team, recognize them, and then we'll do pictures with the school board, okay?
Fred, can I say something?
Absolutely.
So Owen, you don't know me, but, uh, I, every week I drive this carpool of three boys, uh, to soccer. And one of them is on the track, uh, on the cross-country team. And so we spent a whole car ride talking about Owen. And about cross-country, and then, so I never knew anything about cross-country before this. And so, uh, these boys were really, they admired, admired greatly. And it was just really nice to have, you know, um, them talk about their classmates, right? Someone they were looking up to. And I never knew that cross-country runners could be such stars, right? And so it's really nice.
Awesome. Congratulations. And coming in now are, are state champion, uh, lacrosse players. And some of you, you can stand right in front too. So, uh, last spring, two days after Owen won his state championship, uh, on May twenty-seventh, uh, our boys', uh, lacrosse team, uh, earned the state championship with eleven, with an eleven-seven victory over Bellevue down at Starfire. Um, I think the road getting there was easier than, than the final, uh, game. Uh, a nineteen win, uh, nineteen-to-one win over Lincoln in the quarters. Um, and then a seventeen-to-two win over Mount Spokane in the semifinals. Um, and so this group of, uh, athletes were known for having a pretty strong program, but it doesn't mean winning a state championship is easy. Um, it's a sport that I know continues to grow, there's lots of competition around. But, um, uh, certainly, uh, a big victory over Bellevue and bringing home that state championship. So Ian, I'll turn it over to you and give you a chance to talk a little bit more about the team.
Thank you, thanks for having us. Um, this is, uh, all of our team from last year minus the seniors that graduated. We have two of those seniors went on to play in college, so one's at Colorado College playing Division III and one's at Amherst College, um, playing Division III as well. And so this is what's left over from last year's RC with call-ups from last year's JV. Um, this is our eighth state championship since two thousand and one. Um, and I think we've been in six, we've been runner-up like nine times. So we've been in sixteen of the last twenty state championships. Um, yeah, it's just, it's a testament to our, our youth program on the island. We, we have a strong K-through, uh, eighth grade program, um, at each of the elementary schools. And all these guys have been playing usually since kindergarten or first grade and specifically, they've all been playing together since kindergarten or first grade. So, uh, it's a team sport first and foremost. And, um, and these guys, knowing, knowing each other for their whole lives is, is, uh, really the secret to our success every year.
Seniors, who, who are our seniors this year? There we go. So a few more seniors on the team this year. Do anyone want to talk a little bit about the upcoming season?
Matthew.
Matthew's one of our twenty-twenty-four captains. Great.
Yes, I'm very excited, um, just thought of. I'm very excited, uh, I feel like this team's gonna be something special. Um, I feel like we might even compete with last year's team in skill. Um, I'm very excited, honestly. No, yeah, I'm just very excited, uh.
This is our other captain.
Well, the schedule hasn't dropped yet, uh, from Coach, I know he's been working on it since, uh, last season ended. So it's really cool that, you know, we had a east, head out east every, every, um, spring break. That trip was a lot of fun, played Manhasset, all the good teams. Uh, this trip, this past summer went pretty well. Our team is kind of changing towards more of moving the ball around instead of having two or three really good guys that are, that played in college now, um, controlling the offense. I think it's a lot more equitable of the team. It's gonna be really cool to see where that kind of goes with the team this year.
Great. Congratulations on last year. Right around here and then the board will stand in front of you there and we'll do a picture of you. Most of you will be taller than our board and us, so we'll have you come around here and we'll do a picture.
Boys, line up against the desks. Go ahead, follow Zach. You try, keep coming all the way around here. Everybody back up to the desks. Spread out. Boys, back up to the desks, spread out.
All right. Three, two, three, two, one. Okay, perfect. All right, where's Owen? All right. Thank you, lacrosse team, you can go ahead and move out and bring Owen in. Congratulations. Yeah, absolutely. You've been, congratulations. Where's Susan?
Sure.
Susan, jump in. We're a little off-center, we'll move a little bit this way. There we go, all right.
Yeah. I was trying to count.
Uh, David, if you're right a little bit. Three, three, two, one. Congratulations. We're gonna do, uh, Lindsay too. All right. Here we go, three, two, one. Okay, three, two, one. Thank you. Awesome.
Do we need a table?
What's that? Oh, we need to leave that for public views.
Okay. We'll start the public input since we have people waiting and then I'll just make a couple of closing recommendations.
Okay. So we'll go, we've got public input to, this evening, two peoples, uh, Sally and Isabel. Um, Sally, we'll start with you, uh, and I will just read our pub. Oh, uh, are you switching?
No.
No, okay. You, you were just first on the list, Sally, that's why.
I love that.
I, I, I will quickly read our disclaimer. Uh, "The meeting is a meeting of the board in public. It's not a public meeting that guarantees interaction between members of the public and members of the board. When addressing the board at the meeting, please limit your remarks to no more than three minutes. Appoint a spokesperson if the concern is a group concern and, if desired, provide written documentation to the board secretary. Public comments that may or otherwise identify a district student are not permitted without permission of the student's parent or guardian. The board may direct the superintendent to respond at a later date to the issues expressed." Uh, and with that, Sally, please, uh, provide your input this evening.
Thank you, well, I just had a wonderful surprise seeing lacrosse team here. My nephew is on that team and managed to not sound at all like his father, who stands up in front of the par rooms. But, but that was awesome. That's gonna be a moment for our family to have to giggle about. Um, I just want to thank the board for allowing me the time to address, um, you today. Uh, my name is Sally Lozier. I'm a Mercer Island community member and Mercer Island School District employee, the parent of three Mercer Island High School graduates and the current Mercer Island Education Association president. Our local union represents the majority of Mercer Island School District employees and I am here on behalf of them today. In all of these roles, I'm an advocate for public school. I believe that public discourse and involvement in community decision-making is vital to a healthy school system. However, when the discourse turns to attacking our school board members, superintendent, and union members, and all of the other Mercer Island School District employees, it is destructive to us all. This type of behavior on social media and other forums does not advance positive change, attract families to Mercer Island, students to our wonderful public schools, or keep employees working for our district. Advocacy for our public school students and educators is vital to sustain our Mercer Island School District system. I am here today to encourage our Mercer Island community members to take productive and positive actions by attending school board meetings. The fact, the facility discussions that are upcoming and in these forums, take the time to listen to each other. To our superintendent, PTA members, school board members, committee participants, and share your thoughts and ideas, your solutions, your questions respectfully, so everyone feels heard. Change is coming, it is a constant in life. With this in mind, we need to minimize the destructive attacks on each other's. That includes at school board meetings, on social media, and all of the other forums. We need to work together productively because the other way does not keep students in schools. It does not keep employees in Mercer Island School District or keep beloved schools open. Working together for positive, well-informed, thoughtful, student-centered decision-making does. Let's do that moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Sally. Um, most appreciated of that advice and that discussion. I, I am sorry the attacks are coming out so broad. Uh, speak for the board, we have to the board for that. Um, next, next up, Isabel, please.
Okay. Well, good evening, directors. I'm here today as a strong believer in our democratic process, the power of listening and community engagement. I want to, I want to first thank you for your service on this board. It's a lot of work and commitment to our community and we parents really appreciate it. Um, as elected officials, in follow-the-my administrative and board policies that states, the board, behalf of the citizens of the community, holds itself accountable to them by ensuring that all action taken is consistent with the law and the board's policies. In regard to such policies of community engagement, it provides, first, the board's primary roles and fulfilling its responsibilities include, among others, item five, fostering community engagement. Second, it provides that the district shall strive to maintain effective two-way communication channels with the public. Such channels shall enable the board and staff to interpret the school's performance and needs to the community and provide a means for citizens to express their needs and expectations to the board and staff. and provide a means for citizens to express their needs and expectations to the board and staff. Finally, the rules also provide that meetings of the board are open to the public. Because the board desires to hear the viewpoints of citizens throughout the district, it will schedule one-hour periods during each meeting for public participation. With those in mind, I'm concerned with what I saw at the previous regular board meeting. In what appears to be a response to one of both of the public input provided by citizens, one of the directors stated, open quote, "Community members are invited and have been invited to participate in the discussions and then coming in at the end" and just criticized it without having all the basis of knowledge, just frankly just insulting to the people that have spent hundreds and hundreds of hours volunteering that time, close quote. Additionally, it was stated that, open quote, "The level of disrespect that I hear tonight is insulting," close quote. What do those statements mean? Does it mean that as a community member and a voter, if I do not participate in every single meeting or process from day one or do not read every single document, I should not come in and express my viewpoint? Also, what does it mean coming in at the end? Are we at the end of the consultation process or discussions? I thought the decision is ongoing matter or has the end result been decided? At the end, your words, not mine. The reaction of the director and comments that the last regular meeting are inappropriate and simply serve it to discourage community members to come here and provide their viewpoints, share data, and participate in the process as they're able to. Those statements and actions do not meet the board's role of fostering community engagement. What if the community members at the last meeting came in to applaud and praise the board during the public input time? Would similar comments threatening their appearance be made? I highly doubt it. For those reasons, I urge a director to put forth a motion to put in the public record that the actions and comments of the director, the September fourteenth board meeting, were in violation of the administrative and board policies rules. I just quoted, thank you.
Thank you very much, Isabel. I appreciate your comments. Okay, um, let us, with that, uh, community input is closed. As always, uh, we appreciate community input. It will be heard, it will be recognized whether you send it in email or, uh, coming, coming here, speaking directly. Um, and as a board, we listen and recognize all community inputs, so most appreciated. Fred, do you want to continue with that?
Just a couple of other recognitions. October's a really busy month, um, many of them are, but, um, would be remiss not to mention, um, we have National Holy Prevention Month coming in October. Um, we have National Disability Employment Awareness Month. We have National History, um, um, Disability History and Awareness Month, um, Dyslexia Awareness Month, LGBT History Month, um, National Custodial Workers Recognition Day coming up on October second, and on October ninth is Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, I paint that out there to say that there are things that we will certainly be doing. Um, one school can't possibly do all those things and do them well and do all of the other pieces. I think you'll see bits and pieces of, um, components of these, but, um, it will always be important for us to keep in mind, how do we make space? How do we make sure, um, our students know they belong, our staff knows they belong, that we believe in them? And, um, a, a big part of that is making sure that, um, we do recognize these and we make space for these, uh, and, uh, with time and space. So, um, with that busy month coming up in October.
Thank you. Asha, Ava, any, any thoughts, anything you'd like to add, uh, to this, to the board meeting?
Nope, things have been going really well in school. I feel like it's been a nice smooth fall this year.
Yeah, and students are like definitely adapting more to like the new technology, which is nice to see.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, with that, let us move to the consent agenda?
We can go back to three A, we need to do, um, OE five.
Okay, oh, my mistake, yes, thank you.
I'm trying to set another record.
I thought, yeah, it was kind of a surprise. Okay, three A, let's, let's move to that. Board Policy eighteen hundred OE five, stop evaluation and instructional practices. Thank you, Fred.
Do you want to just come, we'll just use the podium. Michelle, we're good, thank you though. Um, we have OE five's monitoring report, um, that Director Prescott, um, has taken the lead on. Uh, and so I'm going to go ahead and have her, um, take it away from there. If we just bring that up there. You might recall last year, um, we did have an area where we were not in compliance when we found some evaluations were not complete. Um, and so this year, uh, we've rectified that component. I would say as I pass it off that, you know, when we went into COVID, under the emergency declaration, there were a lot of provisions that changed for evaluation. Keeping in mind that, A, that first year when schools were closing was hard to complete evaluations. Then we were hybrid, we were back. And so last year was kind of the first time we were back going. There are some things we've got to continue to clean up on and get better, um, with some of our feedback and some of our timelines, but we got all of their evaluations completed. With that, Director Prescott?
Great, well, you covered the first little bit, so I noticed if you could scroll down a little bit. The, the real thing that I wanted to hit on tonight, uh, you can keep going, so it's right there, perfect. Um, is it aligns with, um, kind of the work we started last week with the study session when we were talking about fundamental two. We were talking about, um, shifts and indicators, really trying to make the fundamental language more student-centered. And, um, the big shift in evaluation this year is about the language. So, um, as a state, we've, as a district and state, we've adopted Daniel, Charlotte Danielson's framework for teaching. And we initially used Danielson twenty eleven. Uh, we did training, those were the rubrics and things, they aligned with our state criterion. And then, um, she over the last twelve years has developed and revised those, that framework to be more in line. And it actually fits very nicely with our vision, mission, values, the language we use, both at the district level, the board level, the teacher level, um, and, and even the student level. Um, where we're really focused more on student actions, student contribution, student engagement. Um, and so that language has shifted for this year. Uh, we had some teachers last year who piloted it, uh, with their evaluators. But moving this year, starting this year, uh, the la, the language shift is pretty significant. And so I pulled out some examples for you to see, um, the rubrics changed with it, um, to align. And it's really language, it's not, um, shifting in actions necessarily. Um, because I think, um, on a whole, our staff really do a great job, um, trying to uphold and live into our vision, mission, and values. Uh, but it's now the evaluation language that's aligning with those actions. So for example, uh, in the previous version, it was demonstrating knowledge of students. That was the title of a domain and, or of a component, and now it's knowing and valuing students. Um, and there's a, there's a shift in that, right? Just having knowledge of them doesn't necessarily know, mean that you know and value them. Um, and I think our staff does a great job of really trying to get to know staff, value every student. Um, and so the language is now aligning with that. Um, when we talk about student assessments, instead of just being evaluated on designing student assessments, the language shift is designing and analyzing, right? What does that need to tell us? You heard Director Williams talk a little bit today about I-Rate data and SBA data and the correlation between the two. And really looking to see what is this information giving us? And how do we then adjust what we're doing in classes with students to, to meet their needs? Um, managing classroom procedures, that's very technical, that's very much, you know, uh, I do this, I do this. Whereas maintaining purposeful environments, uh, I think aligns better with our, our language that we use. We talk about providing, um, safe environments for students. Um, communicating with students has shifted to communicating about purpose and content. Uh, we've talked for years about relevancy. Now, as we engage in activities and student learning, we're really talking about the purpose of why we're doing what we're doing. It's not just because I said so, it's not just because, uh, that's what the state says we need to do, it's, it's situated differently. Uh, and I think our teachers, like I said, have been doing this for a very long time. Uh, it's the language that has caught up to our actions. Um, and then the last one, I mean, I will, I, you can read the rest of them. Um, but using assessment instruction, using assessment for learning, right? It's not just that I'm doing it, but I'm doing it towards the end of helping students learn and grow, so. Uh, addition, in addition to the framework shifting, uh, the state revised student growth goals. So every year, uh, as Fred mentioned earlier, um, we have, every teacher, every certified teacher has to, um, set goals. So they do it in a small group, so we call it three point one. They do it for a small subgroup of students, they do it for a whole class or their entire caseload. Uh, and then they have one for their professional growth. And so every year, staff has to set three goals, they work with their evaluator on setting those. And then there is a counter, uh, component of that, which is tracking that growth. And so Andrew, so if you could scroll down a little bit. Um, it's right here, it's great. So, in the previous, um, student growth goal language, a proficient rating. So there's four ratings, there's unsatisfactory, basic, proficient, and distinguished. So if we talk, we're talking about proficient, um, in the previous language for three point one, so that's setting a goal for a small group of students. The, it read, establishes appropriate student growth goals for subgroups of students not reaching full learning potential. Goals identify multiple high-quality sources of data to monitor, adjust, and evaluate achievement of goal. So, we've, we've had this now for a number of years. Teachers would establish their group, establish the goal, and they would have two points in time where they would be looking to see, did, does a student show growth? It's been revised and you can see it's far more robust. And so you'll also see the infusion of students more here. Uh, and I will say that the further we get from unsatisfactory, the more buy-in and engagement from the student is what changes in most of the, the rubrics. So the teacher develops a student growth goal for a group of students within a class who are not yet reaching full learning. The teacher explains how the knowledge of individual students in, in should be informed, the goal in specific ways. The goal addresses an essential standard for the teacher's content and grade level. The goal requires students cognitive and emotional engagement. And the teacher seeks and considers when provided input from students' families in developing the goal. So I think, if I think about some of the things that I've even heard just tonight, right? Like wanting to meet every student's goal, have, wanting to have parents who are highly involved in their children's school and community life. Um, this is really trying to pull in the, um, social emotional component along with the content. So there, it's got additional factors that the previous, um, student growth goals didn't have. And then Andrew, if you scroll down, um, here, it talks about, I'm going to skip over three, two on the left, which was the old one. And if you look at the three, two goal, so this is where it's the rubric piece for the actual achievement of the goal or work towards the goal. Uh, there's evidence of student engagement in the assessment and student monitoring of their own progress, right? So that learning and that monitoring doesn't rest just with the teacher, then it's really trying to get students involved. And again, if you look at the basic language, it's more teacher-focused. As you move towards proficient and distinguished, there's more student engagement in the actual process, in the self-realization of where they stand, what they need to work on, uh, how they, they achieved, what it is they achieved, what route to grow there still is. Um, there's evidence of opportunities for students to share feedback on how they experience the learning, right? It's not just about the product, it's also about the process and making sure that there's some metacognition of what went into that end score, goal, grade, um, and that they're having the opportunity to reflect. And that the teacher reflects with the supervisor on the learning progress for individual students in the group. That the reflection includes an analysis of how the learning activities and structural decisions impacted student progress. So it's not as much about like they did or they didn't, it's really about what did, what does this data show me? What does it tell me about my students, about my instruction, about what I need to be continuing to work on and focus on and how I might tweak and get support moving forward. So it does the same thing, um, for six, one, six, two, eight, one, eight, two. Um, and, but those are the real changes. Um, and I think it, there's so much information, uh, that we've shared with building administrators. They then talk with their staffs, they meet with them, walk through the new language. Um, it's not a new process, it's just really a shift in language that, like I said, I think aligns with our district mission, vision, values, and the ways in which our staff are already working with students. This just solidifies it more in the evaluative process.
Question on the comprehensive cycles versus focus. Um, the middle school and the high school, um, have much fewer on the comprehensive. So it seems that like if one were to read into that, like there is greater retention at the secondary school. And then the comprehensive, which includes new teachers and those new to the district, is, you know, relatively higher at the elementary. So the, the broad question looking at this is, is this reflective of retention in terms of differentials at those levels? Is that common for us? Is that common for, you know, for other districts? Um, you know, i- is it something that's not meaningful or is it but for another, you know, a conversation of a later day?
So the, um, the longitudinal data isn't in here, this is just a snapshot of last year. And if you were to pull up the year prior, um, what you would see is a, a flip-flop. So what happened as a result of COVID is lots of people shifted to focused. And as a result, uh, that left a huge chunk to then go to comprehensive. And so you'll see a pattern, it'll start to even out and be a little more, less disparate. Um, but it was almost of an inverse of the different numbers as we were updating this, this year. Um, so that's why last year, if you looked, uh, at the middle school, there were a ton of comprehensive and very few focused. Um, and same with the high school, because that was the year that we came out of COVID.
Okay, so like COVID sort of disrupted, because I would assume like the sort of just, like sort of like the distribution would be, you know, fairly normalized across levels, but I guess COVID, you know, affected.
And they changed the state law a couple of years ago when it went from being a four-year. So you were on focus for four years and now it's five. And so depending on where you were and caught in the cycle. And then I have, like this year, I have some catch-up with principles where I have many more comprehensives this year than, than before. And that's just because of where they are in the cycle. So, so it's not, um, it, this isn't as great of an indicator for, for retention.
But I would anticipate like within three years, as people cycle off of comprehensive or focused, you'll see it start to balance a little bit. Some people remain on, on comprehensive as people come in and out. Uh, I just think this is still really reflective of COVID where we went into a all-hands-deck. We were so worried about kids that evaluations really went on the back burner, um, from the state level, not just from, from us, but what could we really effectively navigate? And what we could have navigated was trying to get kids learning.
I really love this, uh, revised, um, language. And it's really specific. I really love, uh, you know, the teacher seeks and consider, um, students' family in developing the goal. All this is amazing. And as we're moving towards implementation and really living it, I wonder what conversation we're having, uh, as an educator. I also see, I'm very stressed when I see this, right? In a sense where to really live this out, to really document it, right? It takes time. It's to be able to incorporate fans, students' family to this takes, you know, appropriate number of students, you know, uh, um, within reason. So I guess as a system, first, you know, what conversation or what are we doing to make sure that we're giving, uh, teachers the resources to be able to implement this, to give them the time to talk about like appropriate classroom sizes in order to fully implement this? Because I really want this to be able to, for us to be able to live this out, this is super awesome. But it takes a lot of supporting our educators. Uh, and oftentimes I see like funders and like, um, regulators, you know, putting a lot of expectations. And then you still do what you do within, you know, and then meet up to this level. And it's not good for anybody. So, um, if this is our goal, which is beautiful, uh, and, you know, I think there should be really intentional conversation to add the resources and support.
I think that's part of the on, ongoing conversation, right? I think this, this gives just a little bit of insight to some of the other things that our amazing staff do, right? And we spend a lot of time talking about the student piece, right? And what are they doing in classes? What are the learning activities? What are the curricular adoptions that are going on? Um, but this is one of many things that, that teachers engage in and spend time. They, they want to be proficient and distinguished. And as you look at the rubrics, it is really challenging because just looking at three point one and three point two, those are, that's one of twenty-seven different components that a teacher has to, uh, go through who's on a comprehensive evaluation. Um, you know, I think we'll continue to work with our HR department, with building leaders, talking about ways in which we can support teachers in this work. But I have yet to hear a teacher say or indicate in any way, this is not important work. Um, they really believe in it and it, it is about finding the time to do it because it's one of so many things that they, they work on.
And I can't see Sally from where I'm sitting right now, but I bet she's smiling and nodding her head as you're saying that. Because being on a comprehensive, I don't know if you were or not, but I'm sure you were. Being on the comprehensive cycle, um, is enormous. And when the state went to this, I believe in twenty thirteen, um, to this criterion, these eight criterion, um, you know, it's put a lot on not only the people, but the process. And then when we factor on top of that, um, the number of, um, staff members that a principal is, um, supervising and evaluating both on the classified side and the certified side, um, really, you know, attending to that and, and, and doing what it takes. really, you know, attending to that and doing what it takes. I think resource allocation is a challenge. And I think that's where we have to be understanding that there are some components that you might be able to work on more than others at times. The focused is really nice. When you only have, when you're on focused and you only have to worry about one of the eight and the student growth goal, you can really hone in, that becomes much more manageable. But we put our youngest or our teachers newest to our district through the comprehensive first. And that's always been a question we've asked back from time to time with legislatures is, you know, sometimes these are our newest teachers, and they're having to do this, and there's other components. And maybe there's some wisdom to flip it. So I think we would love to see some scaling back on the, from the legislative requirements on this. Because if we really want to move the needle and improve practice, we have to think about how much can someone really be focused on. But this is what we have right now.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say that the update in the language, I think, is really powerful. I think that before it was just kind of a list of items. And now it's really truly like a framework in the sense of, of the parts of it fit together and provide support for each other and are kind of interlinked. And it really is like, like you do with little kids. It's sort of like scaffolds what a teacher can be doing, is capable of doing, and kind of like shows how the whole thing hangs together. So I'm really excited about that. But I realize it's a lot, all of this is a lot.
I really appreciate it as well. And I think you make really good points in terms of, you know, flipping. I mean, when you're starting a new profession or new job, even in a new community or new grade level, and you know, you're learning on the go, you know, it takes time to settle in. And then you can be more reflective of, wait, what was I doing? How can I learn more? I mean, I think there's a lot of value to that. So that sounds like, it just seems, you know, they're learning curriculum, they're learning new procedures, they're learning new paperwork, and then they're trying to take care of their students and then being asked to do all the extra, which is really important. But does it all really have to be done at the same time, I think is the key question. And then I really appreciate you pointing out that the way that you did this, you know, it's really interesting to see where we were and where we are in terms of the language that we use and impact of that language on everybody. It's, thank you, it's really, really fascinating. I know you didn't write it.
It's just really nice to see the change in terms, like just reading them, they feel way more student-focused in the 2011 terms. And it's really comforting to know that we even have legislation that's looking out for students more than ever before.
Yes, I definitely agree. And I'm glad that like there's a bigger, way bigger focus on like communicating purpose for students especially. Because like I think that's a huge part, just like knowing the context of what students are learning. So yeah, I think it's really.
OE, that's it?
It's an action item, right?
It's an action item.
All right, could I have a motion to find the superintendent in compliance with OE5 staff evaluation and instructional practices?
Submit.
Second.
Move and seconded, all in favor, students?
Aye.
And directors?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's 2-0, 5-0 to find the superintendent in compliance. All right. Now we can move to the consent agenda, am I right? Yeah, cheers. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, students?
Aye.
And directors?
Aye.
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 That's 2-0, 5-0 approving the consent agenda. Superintendent's announcements.
We are all set, I said enough.
And let's do legislative draft report.
So general assembly was fascinating. I've never participated before, so I don't know what they used to look. I mean, I've seen blurbs of them. I watched a little bit of it last year, and then I was in person, gosh, several years ago for a little bit. So I've seen a little bit of it. So I misinterpreted how it was actually gonna happen. For some reason, I thought, I don't know. So the change in the bylaws is one district, one vote. And it was first on the agenda. So we spent about five hours arguing over where it was gonna be on the agenda because of the weighted vote issue. I'm not joking. And by the time we got through that, those that were in favor of it, one district, one vote, and no longer have weighted voting, allowed no discussion. Because in their view, it was already decided. We've been arguing for five hours about the order to do it in. I don't necessarily, people were pretty frustrated because they had things to say. So there was this constant motion to call the vote, which means you vote immediately, and there's no discussion. And it was really silencing voices. And the argument was, you've been silencing our voices for years. And it's like, well, we're kind of here about students, not school boards. I mean, in terms of our job, you know, our job is to represent students, not ourselves. And, you know, so the numbers, like those are, it's such a feeling of, it's such a feeling of long-term, you don't care what I have to say, that they didn't care what anyone had to say. So it was, it was actually kind of a, it was kind of a bummer. It was hybrid and in-person. I think they did, they did it really well. It passed by like 75%.
One district, one vote?
One district and one vote. There were actually, I know, no, hang on, hang on, I know. Where we have, don't worry. We, there were some great proposals that would shrink it down and make it much more, you know, I mean, like, you know, what I said was like, let's have, instead of five districts having to second it, why don't we have 10 districts? Because that pulls it away from all these, we don't have that many of the big districts that make that big impact. Like there's ways to make it so that, you know, the large districts can't just get their way by calling a weighted vote every single time. It takes away coalition building, it takes away the fact that we're all there to represent all children. It was really a bummer. So the entire general assembly for three days. Anytime it was an issue of, I don't want to see east versus west of the state, but it, you know, you know how the issues fall. And it wasn't always that way. But it was every, every vote, I mean, there were many things that passed that probably typically wouldn't have passed. Anything huge, the regionalization, they supported it. There wasn't a lot of argument against it, because it was the 6% to the 2%. So let me finish. And then I know you'll have feedback, and I get it, and I have the same concerns you do. So I'm not, I'm not pushing you on, but let me get to everything. So the regionalization stuff passed. I pointed out, I was like, I don't know why we're going with supporting committee recommendations when we don't have representation on it. The San Juan School District had proposed a proposal, talking about, you know, they're an island community and they go by, they're really impacted by it. And so I supported, I spoke out and supported their, like, I was basically like, why are we not supporting them? They're telling us a need that they have. And their, and the argument against it was, it's too confusing, it's putting too many things in. And they were just asking like, have exceptions for, you know, like have, have exceptions. And they're not the only ones. But, you know, that was a great example of, you know, they're next to these lower cost of living districts by 20 miles next to, but because it's water, there's no people next to them. So it was, it was very, it was a very frustrating general assembly. As a result, the, there's a coalition of board directors, and we're meeting tomorrow morning. Harlan Gallagher with Issaquah is putting it together. And I was looking at the list on the email. I recognize many of the districts, if not all of them, but it's certainly all the, Elba, King County districts. And it's all, basically, I guarantee we represent 95% of the students in the state. So what they're not under, so we're meeting to talk strategy, to figure out as a group what we can do. Because what they are not understanding is, we also pay, if we represent 95% of the districts, I'm throwing that number out there, I don't know that it's accurate, but we represent, I mean, like the top five districts represent about 80% of the students in the state? Top five.
I don't know.
It might even be higher. I don't know, it's really high. We proportionally pay dues to WADA based on our enrollment. So you want us to pay, it's actually not really us, but you want the big districts to pay and not have the representation for their students. So I was like, all right, if they walk away, WADA's done. Because they're, those districts that voted for that with the one and two votes, and were two votes, they, they can't support, I can't imagine they could support a single employee at WADA. So, you know, I think the long-term implications is, or I'm, I'm still hopeful that we're gonna be able to at least walk a lot of this back. I don't know yet, I will certainly give an update at the next meeting. And if there's anything that needs to happen right away, I will reach out to each of you. But with this group, I mean, it's Seattle, Shoreline, Bellevue, Lake Washington, North Shore, Renton, Kent. I mean, and then there's, there are some others around the state that I saw too that I recognize. But I'll know tomorrow and I'll report out to you which districts are participating in this conversation. It is disturbing, but I am not, I'm still hopeful that we can come to something that we can still support. Just because WADA takes position on things, that's for the advocacy of WADA, doesn't mean that we can't then go advocate, set up our own coalitions as part of our own districts like we always could. And, you know, so anyways, I know it's disturbing. Clearly so do many other people. And it really, it really kind of is like, why are we here?
I mean, I guess, like my view is, I mean, going back to regionalization, I mean, the recommendation of the committee was actually far more radical with respect to.
Not that OSPI, not the committee.
Well, the, the language that WADA supported was taking the recommendation of the compensation committee, which was actually even more compressive. Because it would have had a 7% slightly above range from the lowest to the highest, where it was a 12% range under Reichdahl's proposal, which was defeated thankfully. And we preserved our funding for a few million dollars. But, I mean, this is all news, but when I dug into it last year and looked at table 34, which has like the personnel compensation, what struck me is not that Washington is on the higher end nationally on a state, you know, how much we pay, but is how extraordinarily high it is for outlying areas. And that is an inevitable result of McClear. You limit the ability of local districts to fund themselves and say, which I think morally, ethically, there is an obligation at a state level, but then you don't tie it to additional programs and supports and services for those in the outlying areas that are perhaps lower cost of living and lower performing. And then it becomes just a scrum of trying to get the cash and to take from the golden goose and have King County taxpayers pay huge sums to districts and other areas in the name of equity without tied to any accountability. And I think what we've seen with WADA is that it wasn't, oh, like, you know, this was just a, you know, a proposal of Reichdahl. I mean, it was his keystone like financial, like proposal last year. And I think it was a legitimate, it was in play, and we spoke out vocally. Now there's a second and third and fourth bite at the apple through WADA that is now act like weighing in on how funds should be allocated at the state level. And that, I think, puts us in opposition to WADA. And I think it's that simple. I mean, I think WADA, like, they have to provide training. I don't think they speak for our district. And I think we need to choose our allies carefully because depending on how the sausage is made with funding, like when it comes to, not all districts that are at the same regionalization rate are in the same spot because of additional funding supports for the demographics of their like student bodies. I think Issaquah, Bellevue, us, Lake Washington, are all in fairly similarly situated positions that have elected officials that are important and that represent a lot of voters. And I think we need to band together, or I think it's going to be a zero-sum parasitic game in how funding is thought of post-Mclear.
Maggie?
I don't have as much work to do this, but you said that the subsequent voting, beside regionalization, has maybe some other things that wouldn't pass? Have passed because of the one, right? I wonder if, can you identify for maybe next board meeting to identify? What are some of those decisions? So it just kind of on our radar.
They're not, they haven't sent out the summary yet. And I didn't write them down as we were going, just because, yeah, I had to take a break after the.
But that would be helpful, just to.
It would be totally helpful, and I actually intend on really looking at it. And I'm sure that this group is gonna look at that because there were quite a few things. I was like, oh, there would have been a weighted vote on this, and oh, there would have been a weighted vote. But I don't think we're there yet, I really, truly don't. I think that, just because of one issue, I would never go as far to say that WADA doesn't speak for us. I think that every district has, has something that they're different on. It's an important one, but I'm also not ready to throw in the towel with WADA either. I want to see what this group can do. You know, we talk often about like, you know, if it, like, if, if they wouldn't, if, like, you know, can Eastern Washington and Western Washington separate into two states? We don't want to do that, because then they'd get two Senate votes too, right? So, and yeah, I'm being a little bit flicky here. Please don't take me as like my word on that. But, because in terms of the tax issue, I was talking to someone who knows and was saying that we pay like, you know, 10% more in taxes or whatever. Like, the numbers is like, we pay, we get like, I can't remember what the number she said. You know, 10%, we lose most of what we pay to other districts. And then, and then we only get out like one point, or we get out like 0.7, and they're getting out like 1.3 or something like that, and barely paying in any. Like they get far more out than they put in, and we get far less out than we put in. That's a better way to say it without trying to throw a number on it. Which is true, I mean, that's, that's the issue that King County has. Our cost of living is higher, our salaries need to be higher because our cost of living is higher, our services cost more because our cost of living is higher. And everything frankly just costs more. And we also can get services, whereas in a lot of parts of the state, they can't even get services. So they don't have those expenses, it's not good for kids. They need to find solutions for that. But they're not paying money for services that they can't get. So I say this with a smile, because it's a really frustrating process, and it really kind of goes back to the prototypical school model and how we're funded. So for, I'm not, I'm not ready to go there yet. I want to see what this group, kind of the tone of it. I will report everything back, I'll report on the things that seem to kind of go sideways. You know, I was paying specific attention to the regionalization. But even some of the districts that you named, I was, you know, texting with them during the general assembly, and I was like, pointing out, I was like, why are you supporting this? Like, you know, here's my concern, and they're like, oh, good point. So it's like, I'm kicking myself. Like it never occurred to me that we would lose the weighted voting. I was like, well then, you know, I wasn't worried about it, I know, sorry.
No, no, I mean.
No, I messed up. But if I reached out to them ahead of time and said, here's my really big concern, like, it honestly wouldn't have made a difference in the vote, because it was still 75, 80%. But I think it's something that nobody had thought of other than us. And so I think that's a really, you know, I'm not done yet. I think we have a lot, I think there's a lot of room for, I think we have a lot to push back on. You know, if we just, if this area threatens to go, WADA crumbles. I don't want to see it happen, because it's a very powerful advocating source. And we just, and we do have the freedom to advocate for, and we have very powerful legislators. And so we don't need WADA in the same way that small districts with very quiet voices have. Because we have, our legislators have a lot of power. So we can go to them and say, hey, this is your district, and here's how it's impacting us. And they listen and they take it forward. So I'm not there yet personally. I'll, I will keep you, I was not expecting this to be much of a report, but it was. So that's where we are, and I'll keep you, I'll post it. I called, I called Fred, Maggie ties that too. I called Fred like as that was happening, and I was like, oh my God, what did? I called Fred, like, as that was happening, and I was like, oh my god, what did just happen? It was crazy. It was crazy, it kind of felt like the congressional hearing that happened today. I don't know if anybody saw it.
I just can't believe we're seventy-five percent after five hours.
It was crazy.
People have like all the time in the world to like realize the implication.
No, but it's, but it's all the small districts. And it, and it didn't matter if it was like a district with, I don't know what our smallest district is, but I know that there's someone like, less than fifty students. Much less than fifty students, right? That's crazy. So anyways.
And then like, it just confirms my general belief of like the knowledge of both school board directors statewide.
We can say that away, right?
Isn't there that, isn't there that one school district that has like eleven students somewhere in Washington State? Yeah, so I'm, I'm also not ready to throw in the towel on WASDA yet, but this feels like something really untenable to, to go forward with. It feels like, you know, in countries where, where you have to produce like a coalition government, and everyone kind of has to agree to like a common, you know, compromise situation to move forward. Like, I just can't imagine this is gonna stay as, as is. But I look forward to hearing your updates. And thank you for your service in sitting through five hours of wrangling.
No, that was just, that was just proposal number one. Forty more after that, but.
But it wasn't weighted vote, first proposal, right?
It was not a, no, bylaws are not weighted votes. Bylaws are one district, one vote. Everything else used to be weighted vote, and it's been weighted votes, we talked about.
So the vote on the weighted votes was, was not weighted?
Correct, because it was bylaws.
Because it was bylaws?
Yep. And like I said, there were some great compromise proposals. And they were voted down by the same percentages. And then even the call to votes scored that number. I mean, you need two-thirds, yes, to move to, and discussion and move to weighted votes. We didn't even get through the first five minutes of discussion.
I mean, I still think looking at the, the, the composition of the Compensation Committee, that's sort of a tongue twister.
Yeah, yeah. Was indicative, what was it?
I thought it was indicative, I mean, I think this is a long time coming. I don't think it's a surprise, I think there's a game plan.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of districts that consider themselves smart are not politically smart. And like, you know, or like.
It would not have made a difference, the small districts banded. But the small districts banded together, and most of them are at the bottom end of the regionalization. They banded together, they got people out there to, to come to General Assembly who have never stepped foot in a WASDA event. Everybody gets a vote, and I did not understand the process enough and did not realize that with bylaws, it's one district, one vote. And they got their people there. I mean, and our people always participate. So it's, WASDA, we don't think, this was presented, because the question was asked, you know, when did weighted votes, weighted voting start? Back to the records of when votes were actually counted, was eighty-six, and it was always weighted voting. And people are fairly certain it was, it's always been in effect. Because who in their right mind would join an organization when you are paying, you know, and, and representing the students? And I, when I talk about paying, I mean, in proportion to the number of students you are representing. It was, it was, it was crazy town. It was like crazy town has arrived in Washington. And it was, let's see if we can pull it back.
And so far, I have not heard anything from WASA or the ESD, but I have, I have begun to reach out to see where that conversation's gonna go. Those are the groups that I'm most closely affiliated with, who would have some of those other people in it. It's gonna have some people maybe with some different, with some differences, but I'll bring back information as well.
Thank you. Let's move on, thank you very much.
Yeah, sorry.
Let's move on to announcements and closing reports. Starting Tam?
I don't have anything.
Tipper?
So just as a parent, I attended high school curriculum night last night. It was very, very well-attended. And, you know, I don't know if my, my kid had the jackpot, but I'm so impressed with staff. And so, so impressed with the communication we got. They're going through their syllabus and explaining the content and grading practice and your expectations. And just people who are really excited and like their jobs, and you can feel it. So thank you to everyone who participated in that. So, you know, I wasn't gonna say anything tonight, because I feel like it was resolved with those that, that, anyways. I, I responded on Facebook yesterday to a comment on someone saying about attending the community meeting. I, and, and I felt like was presenting misinformation. I said, and I just responded and said, please attend the community meeting. You're gonna get a lot of information that, that seems to conflict with what's been out there from the district. That's all I said. Oh my god, I was attacked, attacked personally, personality-wise. To the point where I get why we're encouraged not to do things like that. And my only point was, please come to the community meetings, because we wanna hear your voice. That's all I said. So I finally wrote on it, and I'm just gonna, I'm leaving in at this. So I said, hey, everyone, I'm a real person with flaws and all. I get frustrated with the lack of respect towards our staff and the misinformation that flies around our small community. It causes unnecessary anxiety in so many people. I try to be patient and understanding. There are times that I fail. I own it and always strive to do better. I volunteer for school board because I care about this community and want the best for each of our kids. If you wouldn't say it to my face, please don't say it online, it is hurtful. By the way, and I wasn't gonna say this, because it's not anyone else's business, I reached out to Ms. Buckley by phone after our last meeting, and we had an excellent, productive conversation. We addressed the issues, I expressed my concern, like, why I was frustrated, and not about the things she said, but how it was said. And it's just a little bit remarkable to me how I'm being attacked for my tone of voice and no one else is. And I appreciate that I take responsibility for myself, but it, you know, come on, let's look at the world in, in, in actually a fair way. And let's all treat each other with respect and go forward with, if you wouldn't say it to someone's face, it doesn't need to be written on social media. And it's not the place for discourse. I am happy to meet with anyone, anytime that I'm available, to have any sort of productive discussion about the issues. I have been, I always will be. This is not gonna fly, and all it does is get people to not wanna participate, not wanna serve on boards, volunteer boards. We all have jobs, we all have other things, commitments too. But, you know, I recognize that everyone has different capacity, but, you know, we make these choices. So please respect that and recognize that. And I appreciate the public input today, because I stand by every word that she quoted. I get it, I value the constructive comments, I want to hear them, and I want to hear people's opinions. I don't wanna be ridiculed, I don't wanna be disrespected, and I don't want the same thing for my fellow board members and our entire staff, from our bus drivers who see our kids first in the morning, to our superintendent who employs them all. It's not okay. They work here because they care about our kids. Every single person sitting up here is doing what they're doing, because they care about every kid. Because let me tell you, we do get a lot out of this, it's a lot of really hard work. So let's have respect go every way. I will continue to make every effort to live up to that as well.
Thank you. Okay.
I do not have anything to report, other than I have a new bike, which I'm happy about.
Maggie Ty?
I don't have anything, thank you.
I'll, I'll just, very quickly, I, I had opportunity to visit Yakima Elementary School and Middle School. It is on the eastern side, it was very interesting, eastern side of Yakima. Everybody there, you know, the kids were mostly Hispanic, they spoke Spanish. We were doing special assembly, the sounders had come and put in small soccer pitches for them to use. And then this other nonprofit put in a garden that the students helped design and plan. And this, this garden with shade and rocks and a place for them to be outside was all put there, and then their kids maintain it. They make, the kids maintain all these things. They learn about science, they learn about watering it, keeping it, updating it, finding out what the needs of other students are, keeping it going. And so there was a big assembly on the soccer pitch that they, they all came and met in. Five hundred kids in, in the school we were at where this was going on, everybody spoke Spanish. It was just amazing, like, the principals, the teachers, the superintendent, they'd be going continually between Spanish and English. And the students were between Spanish and English. It really was incredibly enlightening to see what immersive language was like in these districts, you know. And you could clearly see, like, all the courses that would be taught were taught by, by teachers who could speak Spanish and English. And very, very seamless. And all the speakers, except for, I think, a couple of us, the sounders and the non, and the nonprofit, everyone else spoke Spanish and English to the whole group. It was, it was completely fascinating, it was really neat. Kids were amazingly well-behaved, like, I mean, kindergarten through fifth grade, sitting out in the sun, watching, watching these events occur. Really impressive. We got to talk to some of the groundskeepers and the people maintaining this. There seems to be a real divide between the haves and have-nots in Yakima. And there's concern about the eastern side schools not getting the right maintenance and all that that they need. And so, you know, the school boards and the school districts are taking extra care to make sure that the east side Yakima schools are kept up to date and modernized. And, you know, if there's any graffiti or any painting occurring, they paint the whole walls, you don't see any seams. But then they've also found having these pitches and these gardens build a sense of ownership amongst the kids in the school, and that's super great too. But it, it was just really impressive to see Eastern Washington School up close with the kids and with the teachers, kind of all in play. And I think, you know, as we talk about WASDA and we talk about the small-town vote, you know, this is worthwhile. These type of trips might be just worthwhile for us to, us to do and understand or, you know, build these relationships with these other districts. It's pretty meaningful. Also, on a side note, Yakima, seventy percent of the hops are grown there. So it's fresh hop season, so all the beers are made with special fresh hops. Maybe I shouldn't talk about alcohol and school premises, but it was really good. Anyway, that's all I've got, so that's my little piece of feedback around this. Super cool to go visit. Anything else, student, Al Eva Asher, any final?
We're, Eva and I are hosting a panel for all the school board candidates on October nineteenth, during the first and second lunch, which is, I think, eleven forty to like one fifteen, I think, other times. So there's like a break in between the two lunches. So you guys are all invited to come if you guys want to. It's right after the site visit of IVA.
Can I just super quick add that if you look on, well, I don't think it's on the district site yet, but it's certainly on the PTA website. There's some really cool items that we're putting on, that are on for sale, and it's only a week. And for, to raise money for the senior class party, but there's some really cute stuff. It's not only senior-oriented, there's glassy babies and, and stainless wine glasses that, that are MI, and they're pretty cute. And, and so just encourage you to check it out, and just nice, most thrilling collectibles. And Maggie Ty has something.
Maggie Ty?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that the candidates, since I'm technically a candidate, have also been invited to record a short answer to some questions from the radio station. So they're gonna be running little segments with each of the candidates introducing themselves, which is nice. Go Student Voice.
Okay, it is seven twenty-four. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
It's in Tam's favor.
All in favor, students? Directors?
Aye.
Aye.
That's two zero five zero, and with that, we are adjourned at seven twenty-four. Thank you very much.
Thank you.